All right, thanks Brian and welcome everyone to this July 8, 2024 meeting of the Homewood City Council. I will go ahead and call that we don't have any proclamations or anything tonight, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're gonna start tonight with an invocation from Councilor Andrus and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone will please stand.
You will pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for all of the blessings you bestow upon us here in Homewood. Thank you for the wonderful people who serve and work in our city and our community at large and for all those that are gathered here tonight. In Psalm 139 verses 23 and 24, King David says, "Search me, God, and know my heart; test me and know my anxious thoughts. See if there is any offensive way in me, and lead me in the way everlasting." Please guide us tonight to work together inoffensively, to work with open hearts and open minds. I pray we glorify you in all we do. Lead us in your way, Lord everlasting. An added prayer tonight for those impacted and in the path of hurricane peril. It is in your blessed name we pray. Amen.
All right, thank you, Councilor Andrus. Mr. Secret, if you will please roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Walton. Gear.
Here.
Alamon.
Here.
Wolverton. Sims. Jones. Smith. Nels.
Here.
Andrus.
Here.
Hardman.
Here.
President Wyatt.
Here.
All right, so we've got nine people here tonight. Next is the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of June 24, 2024. Those previously been distributed, I entertain a motion as second to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same. Second. Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Walton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved nine to zero. Next, we have ward vacancies. We're gonna start with the an at-large historic preservation appointment that closed today. Ms. Nels?
Yes, we only got one applicant for that, which was David Baines. And I would like to make a motion to appoint David Baines.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Nels, second from Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved nine to zero. Congratulations to Mr. Baines and thank you for your service. Just a reminder that we also have a Ward for Environmental Commission that closes on the 22nd at 4:30. If anyone knows anyone interested in that one. All right, next we have one addition to the agenda. This will go to committee referral. It's gonna be 04-07-24. Request to consider a loading zone on St. Charles Street. This comes to us from Counselor Walton and will go to public safety. So with that one addition, I would entertain a motion as second for approval of the amended council agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Walton, second by Ms. Gear. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved nine to zero. We don't have anything on the consent agenda tonight, so we'll go straight to whole business. 06-06-24, request for permission for the mayor to execute construction agreement with Aldott for Atrip 2 project on US 31. Brought to us by Kale Smith. And we'll start with a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met July the first. And upon hearing from Kale Smith, we voted three to zero to recommend approval. All of our motions were made by Counselor Smith and seconded by Counselor Walton.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And let the record reflect that Mr. Wolverton is here now, so that will be a vote of ten to zero and will be Resolution 2481. All right, next item, 07-06-24, request for approval to enter annual managed EDR subscription. Brought to us by Brandon Sims, our IT Director. And another report from Finance, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee, after hearing from Brandon Sims, voted three to zero to recommend approval of the item. The funding is not to exceed 24,000.
All right, so we have another motion for Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Has also ten to zero and will be Resolution 2482. Next item, 08-06-24, request to surplus miscellaneous library equipment and items brought to us by Judith Wright, our Library Director. And we'll start with another report from Finance, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee voted three to zero to recommend approval of this item.
All right, Mr. Kendrick, will you give us a first reading?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance declared certain property is surplus. Hereby established and declared as following described, personal property of the city is no longer needed for public and municipal purposes. It declares surplus property, miscellaneous library equipment items, which is attached as Exhibit A, a lengthy list. Section two, the mayor and clerk could be authorized and directed to dispose of the property by auction to the highest bidder.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we have a motion for you now, a consent from Mr. Sims, a second from Mr. Hardman. Mr. Secret, if you please do a roll call vote.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Walton?
Yes, sir.
Gear?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Hardman?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that's ten to zero. Now entertain a motion as second for approval.
So moved.
Second. Motion for Mr. Walton, second from Mr. Wolverton. Another roll call vote, please, Mr. Secret.
Yes, sir. Counselor Walton?
Yes, sir.
Gear?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Hardman?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes, so that is ten to zero and will be ordinance number 2904. Next item, 15-05-24, public hearing that was held on June 24, 2024 at 6:00 PM for consideration of a sign variance at 8:17 Greens Springs Highway. This is the Edge and is brought to us by Candace Watson of Signage Inc. in Wyatt-Pew. We had the public hearing at our last meeting and closed the public hearing but carried the item over because I believe there was some interest in knowing some additional information. So if y'all, I'm assuming that's what we got here now and if y'all will, just let us know where we are with it.
This is J.J. Thomas. He is the owner and developer, so I'm gonna let him speak to everything that's going on here and he can probably answer all you questions. Yeah, sounds good. I was gone all last week on vacation. Did not get burned. I badged today. I got very burned. Apologize. Yeah, so we're here for a variance on the wall sign. One of the counselors asked about a monument sign last time. We did not have that ready. That is the monument sign. I think the question was, do we have the Edge logo on it? We do. It's above it. It'll go right there on Greens Springs frontage. So we do have the Edge logo on it. Monument signs are not allowed to be internally illuminated, so it's only external illumination. So we just have a light coming off the ground. So the reason we're asking for the variance on the wall sign is to get that internal illumination. One thing I want to point out, the variance is a little unique from other ones you guys have heard because this is a shopping center sign. It's not a tenant sign. So normally when you hear a variance for a wall sign, it's from like a car dealership or someone who is advertising their own business. We are advertising the shopping center that has nine businesses in it and it'll be the only sign on that wall. And our opinion and why we're asking for a variance is we need it internally illuminated, which only a wall sign can do. And we need a little bigger than that 36-inch limit in the ordinance so people can see it at night and it's visible.
Yeah, Brian has the smaller version too.
Yeah, so that is the proposed size and I believe that Brian wants to show you what the, that would be the 36.
And Wyatt, what we're talking about here, just refresh my memory, it's just a size variance.
Just a height, a copy height variance.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have an internal illumination outside of downtown, correct?
There is internal illumination, yes.
That's what I thought. Okay, so we're not asking, he's not asking for that variance, it's just size.
And what's the size of the, of the second, what's the size of the proposed sign?
64 and 36 is the, is the limit. And 64, in our opinion, was the smallest we could get where it still looked good. We're not trying to make it huge, in our opinion. The other thing I want to point out is the shopping centers are allowed what's called a bonus size on their monument sign. So you guys have already approved the monument sign to be bigger for shopping centers. We did not take advantage of that. Our monument sign's only one-third or so of the allowed signage. But in the same spirit, we were hoping that we could get that bonus for a shopping center on the wall sign. And again, it's for the shopping center, not a tenant. And it's about a 67% bump to what you'd normally allow for a monument, which is exactly what we're asking. 64 is about 67% bigger than the 36 inches, so it sort of lines up. I mean, the one thing I mentioned to Wyatt today, and I don't know that it's completely relevant, but the ordinance says you can have 36-inch copy, 36-inch copy. In my opinion, I could just divide it in half and have two 36-inch copies. And it would accomplish the same thing for the variance I'm asking. I would much rather have the variance and just have one piece. And I'm sure Don and his company would prefer that. So that is all I have, but happy to answer questions.
Anybody got any other questions?
I just wanted to re-clarify to you, Wyatt, you, you mentioned this last time, but I forget the numbers. So by comparison, what is the actual allowable surface area for the sign? And how does, what does that, how does that fit within this by comparison?
So we're allowed.
Yeah, you've got it written right there.
We're allowed just over 154 square feet and based on the facade, this sign is just under 54. So it's about a third less than what's allowed.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to re-clarify the, the numbers by comparison.
Yeah, and that's where I got, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the third was that. We were allowed to be three times bigger. That's, that's a good point. The monument sign may not be the same.
If I could just address something that JJ mentioned. He mentioned that if he doesn't get the variance, he could split the E in half and make two compliant. But I, I would not be able to approve that.
Yeah.
As a permit. I mean, that, that goes.
That's not your, that, I understand. That's not your interpretation.
That's right. It's still an E whether it has a little separation in the middle or not. Now.
I understand.
Hopefully we don't have to look at the ordinance.
I had a quick question. In terms of the various businesses that potentially go in, could they potentially all put up signs? In, 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 to, to promote their businesses there? Is that, is that an alternative, a desired alternative? I'm saying, is that a possibility within the given ordinance? Like if, if you have eight different businesses, could they each have a sign here?
Have a wall sign?
Yes.
Not on the, not on the tracks wall?
Not on the frontage.
Inside the development.
But they could technically on the front. Could they? I'm just.
No, not without a variance.
Yeah. It's like, think of the. I'm just getting clarity, yeah, clarification.
Yeah.
So I'd like you to answer.
Let Wyatt answer the question first as to whether or not they can have one on the outer wall.
Well, they're allowed one wall sign.
Just one wall sign regardless of whether they're promoting the center or a business.
And they're, the ordinance permits those per tenant or per storefront. So moving it out, moving one out to the side like this or out in this area would be, would be probably a couple of variances. It'd be an additional wall sign and a location variance.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarity.
Yeah, just, just to make sure. They could put it on the outside, but they're putting it on the inside instead.
I would have to see, in this district, I think it says one per storefront. So I don't know if we could consider this their storefront.
And separate from that, if I hear Mr. Thomas correctly, what you're saying is you're proffering that, that you're not allowing tenants to put it on the outside, on this same wall.
Correct.
Yeah, so, yeah, you see the, the glass in the wall? So you have Boba Jawa coffee and Gelato Popar on the right. You have Cookie Plug on the left. They will probably put signage in fact, and they already have in that glass. I will proffer and I've already let them know, we do not want any more signage on the tracks wall other than the Edge logo. Happy, happy to proffer that officially. And I do think they get one wall sign, one storefront. But their storefront, if you guys are not familiar with development, is behind that wall. So they each have their own logo in front of their actual ordering window or business. They will not be putting on the Greens Springs frontage.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Motion.
All right, so we got a motion from Mr. Alamon, a second from Mr. Walton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is approved 10 to zero and will be Resolution.
No, you had to know.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. So that is nine to one. And will be Resolution 2483. Yeah, 2483. All right, thank you very much. All right, next item, 04-06-24, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to rezone 2917 Linden Avenue from C1 to C4A. The applicant is Virginia Allen to facilitate its redevelopment for appropriate retail uses. This comes to us from Planning Commission with a five to zero favorable recommendation. And we'll start with a report from P and D. Ms. Andrus?
Yes, after hearing from Virginia Allen, the committee voted four to zero to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Andrew Wolverton and seconded by Counselor Andy Walton.
All right, so with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I see Ms. Allen already at the podium.
I gotta head start. Thank you. Yes, I'm Jenny Allen and I appreciate the chance to speak with you about this. My rezoning request from a C1 office to a C4 retail on 2917, 2919 London Avenue. As the need for office space has declined with the pandemic and remote work, now seems the right time to do this. Chase Streisner of Streisner Investments is directly across from me. He's the owner of 2916. And he had his C1 office rezoned in 2022 to a C4. So that leaves me the only C1 left on the street. If we rezoned, it would make everything consistent C4. And when I have mentioned this to other property owners, they have been very positive about it and they would welcome a renovation. Full Circle, which is an existing business on the street, has expressed an interest in making it become their permanent location. Chase Streisner has been very helpful and supportive. So has Mark Westfall of Caveat, owner of Caveat. Brian Krogsgard, Wigan, and Christopher Design. And you should all have letters of support from them. As a longtime owner, was first introduced to the building. And if, Brian, if you could pull up that first image, that image number one, that's the subject property. So I was first introduced to it in 1981 as a tenant on the 2919 side. And there was an antique shop on the 2917 side. This is the building that has been there. It was originally built in 1926 before the city was a city. And it's a, it was built as a residential duplex. The white drive in between, I'm, I'm directly next door to Christopher Design. And if you know Pebblehurst, I'm literally right next door to Pebblehurst. So that is an alley right there, Pebblehurst and Christopher Design on the north side, my property on the south side. And if you can go to that second image, there's one from the back. Image number two, there. All right, so I'm standing in the back of Savage's newly resurfaced parking lot. And you can see Christopher Collection right there. There's the back of my property and there is the alley that leads straight. If you go straight down that alley, you will run into the Bell Center because it goes right through Crescent. If you could pull the next one up, yes, okay, that is Pebblehurst. You are literally looking out the 2917 side and it is that close. So I am that close to a C4. They are all down the street, all across from me and all behind me. It carries the A, the C4A request because, not because of the permitted use or the structure size, strictly on the lot size. According to the ordinance, less than 6,000 square feet, anything from 1,500 to 6,000 square feet carries that little A designation. Over 6,000 square feet is just C4. So everything else on the street is C4. But because this one was built, it has the same depth as the other lots, but it has, it was an infill lot in 1926. And so it is a slightly smaller width, which makes the size, I think it's 52, 65 square feet instead of the 6,000. But the four doesn't have, I mean, it's still the four in every other respect except there is, there are few setback differences, just a few. Just a little, maybe five feet or something, nothing huge. And then there's a difference in the required parking space. That is a difference. There's less parking, but everything behind all the 18th Street are C4As. So I am in the middle of C4s one way or the other, but it has to be a C4A because of the square footage. This is literally out the front window and there is 2916, Chase Streisner's building right there, the alley. And then it goes to the Dobbins Group and then all down that way. And the next slide, I am literally standing on the little front porch and there's Pebblehurst looking toward Vulcan. And everything on the street is C4. And there again is the setback on the street. This is the railing on the front porch and again, you see the alley that leads through. And I mentioned the alley because, I don't know if y'all are familiar with Full Circle, but their mission is to train young adults and students with disabilities. Hopefully to enter the workforce. And they have, Full Circle has partnered with the schools, with Mountain Brook, with Homewood and with, and with Vestadia. So that they bring the students via school bus to, for the kids to volunteer and to work in the building. And it works very nicely, except it causes congestion on the street when you get a big yellow school bus with unloading. So the alleys, they could pull into the alley and that would give some relief to that congestion. Because where they are right now, do y'all know where they are? Do you know that location? Okay. It's, it's close to that Reese intersection, Reese Street. So this alley would be helpful and there's also an alley directly behind my building. So that would help. And I think they have a really good mission. I hope it all works out, but they can do nothing without a rezone for retail.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Let me, I think I know the answer to this, but let me just make sure. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If it's not, I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I have one question. You mentioned that there aren't any parking requirements. Do you have some, do you own some parking spaces on the property?
Oh, there are at least 12 parking spaces, as it is.
That's a lot more than they currently have.
Exactly. But they will have to do, they're gonna be doing renovations because they've got to make it ADA compliant. So there's gonna be some handicap parking that's gonna have to take place in the front and the back. So that's gonna have to be.
Shifted or a bit changed.
Yeah, but they're not, it's not as though they have cars that employees take up car space, as you do in a lot of other.
But they have volunteers that work there during the day.
Absolutely. They're volunteers and generally come by bus or van. So they don't park there. The buses don't park there. They just drop the students off and they work and then pick them up.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Sims?
Yes, Ms. Allen, thanks for the presentation. I just, I know that at committee last week, I wasn't there, so my apologies for that. But there was some discussion around C4 and C4A and you just kind of went through some of that detail in regards to the, you know, it's really the size of the space and not the intensity or the size of the property of Wyatt striving for the C4A. So I was just wondering if you'd be willing to proffer anything related to the height of the structure or the number of stories?
Well, I think Kale can perhaps answer any of those questions. It's, if it's under 6,000 square feet, it just, the only thing you can request is a C4A. And the ordinances for that are very clear. And it would, as far as what they will be doing as far as renovation, I feel is going, I mean, I haven't seen any renderings. But I think they are, the architect that they have spoken of is one that is Homewood and you all know him. And it would all be according to the height and I don't think they would need any variances for that. Do you?
The maximum height limit is the same for C4 and C4A, it's 35 feet tall.
Okay, my apologies then. Okay. I just know that that seems more than what, you know, the adjacent buildings currently, but it is, so it is similar.
It's, yeah.
Between those districts. Okay, my apologies.
I move for unanimous consent.
Wait, wait, wait. Mr. Kendrick, will you give us a first reading?
It's an ordinance to further amend ordinance 62886 of the City of Homewood title zoning ordinance and zoning map. Planning Commission of City of Homewood has favored recommended that the property described here and below be rezoned from its current zoning classification C1 Office Building District to City of Homewood C4A Retail Shopping District zoning district. Whereas the council has determined, found it necessary to set a public hearing for July 8, 2024 and has directed the city clerk to give notice as provided by law. Now therefore be ordained by the city council as follows. That ordinance 2886 will be amended to read as follows. If the following described property, 2917 Homewood Avenue, with a legal description attached as Exhibit A, being the same as hereby taken out of its current Homewood zoning ordinance, C1 Office Building District and rezoned to the City of Homewood C4A Retail Shopping Zoning District. In section two, from and after the act number of the ordinance, the usage restrictions permitted under the C4A zoning district will be, well, controlled uses permitted under this property. Section three, that July 8, 2024, six o'clock PM is the time and place fixed for the public hearing. At which time the public will be provided opportunity to be heard. Section four, the clerk is given notice as required by law for the public hearing scheduled for July 8, 2024. Section five, any part of this ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by accord of common jurisdictions and all other parts not affected thereby shall remain in full force and effect. Section six, the ordinance shall become effective mead upon adoption by the city council, approved by the mayors otherwise become law.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Ms. Andrus, did you have a motion you wanted?
I did. I'll move for unanimous consent. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Jump again.
A motion from Ms. Andrus. Do we have a second? Second from Mr. Alamon. And a roll call vote, please, Mr. Secret.
Yes, sir. Counselor Walton?
Yes, sir.
Gear? Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nels? Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Hardman?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that's ten to zero. Now entertain a motion as second for approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Andrus, second from Ms. Gear. And another roll call vote, please, Mr. Secret.
Yes, sir. Counselor Walton?
Yes, sir.
Gear?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Hardman?
Abstain.
President Wyatt?
Yes, so that is nine, zero to one and will be ordinance 2905. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, next item, 09-06-24, request for consideration of a sign variance in the right of way adjacent to 2710, 20th Street South. Brought to us by, by Talogy Wellness and Med Spa, Cassie Churchill of Alpha Graphics and Wyatt Pew. Just a little quick explanation before we get the report from Special Issues as to why this is here instead of consent. It's because, since this item requires a, or to be approved, this item requires a public hearing. So it's better if we have an entire council vote on whether or not we're going to set that public hearing, which is what's before us tonight. And that's why it's here rather than the consent agenda, even though it did not have a favorable vote in committee. So with that, Ms. Nels, if you'll give us a report from Special Issues.
So when we met on July 1st, Council Gear moved to refer this item to the full council. But that recommendation of Council Andrus seconded the motion and the motion failed on a vote of zero to three.
All right, so if someone will make a motion in the positive at this point.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
No, I'm sorry. So we have a motion from Ms. Andrus and a second from Ms. Nels. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, so that fails zero to 10. All right, thank you. That brings us to our amended committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion as second for approval of that amended agenda.
So moved. Second.
A motion from Ms. Nels, second from Mr. Walton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved 10 to zero, which brings us to other new business, 03-07-24, request for consideration of approval of vouchers through the period of June 25, 2024 through July 8, 2024. Brought to us by J.J. Fishoff. And Mr. Jones, is, is this still Mr.?
No, and it's yours truly.
Ah.
So I review, it's my, it's my turn.
Congratulations, Mr. Alamon.
For this quarter and I don't.
Uh, for this quarter, and I don't think I even communicated with, uh, Counsel Alman, so that, but he knew that it, it had been done. Uh, just some interesting, uh, tidbits here. Uh, uh, we're approving here two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and sixty-three cents, uh, which comprises a hundred-and-ninety-two invoices. Uh, so, uh, that's a typical run. I see a lot more probably in the fall. But that's the number, and I reviewed, and I had lots of questions, and I had all, everything answered, uh, to my satisfaction. So I would move, uh, for approval of the vouchers for June twenty-fifth through Ju, July eighth.
Second.
All right, so a Mr., motion for Mr. Jones, second for Mr. Gualtin. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved, ten to zero, and we resolution twenty-four eighty-four. Brings us to the end of the agenda. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, just a reminder to everybody about the Vulcan Vault competition that will be out in front of Rosewood Hall on Friday and Saturday, uh, this coming weekend, and, uh, that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Gualtin?
So, uh, I will set public safety immediately following finance, and for all those times that I don't speak up, uh, I'm going to take a few minutes. I wanted to, um, share some details from the June twenty-seventh, uh, HPD annual award ceremony to some of the folks that received accommodations. Um, I feel like one of the things we can do, or I can do a better job of is sharing people's, you know, the awards they've received, the accommodations, you know, just the excellent, the excellence that we know exists in HPD and HFD, um, but just to hear some of those names. So some of the distinguished award winners were Sergeant Self, Sergeant Marquod, Sergeant Tripp, uh, Corporal Weisenhut, Corporal Adams, Corporal Green, uh, Corporal Bullard, Corporal Bruges, Corporal Black, I'm sorry, Officer Blackman, Officer Abney, Officer Leonard, Officer Altabella, Officer Sutton, Officer McManus, and Officer Munger, and Officer David Johnsey. Uh, in the unit citation for the K-nine units, those officers that received accommodations were Corporal Jordan Suggs, Officer Nick Altabella, and Officer Chris Brown. Uh, the life-saving award was given to Corporal Simon, and just a few more, you know, bear with me. The exemplary service awards were for Sergeant Moat, Officer Munger, and Officer, uh, Gagliardi. Uh, Detective of the Year was Detective Keith Smith. Uh, Civilian Employee of the Year was Correction Sergeant Chad Mumpower. Um, if you remember, Mumpower recently, uh, passed away, so it was, he was also, um, had a, I guess, a, um, memorial commend, commendation for him there too. Um, and the Citizen Commendation Award went to, uh, Paul DeMarco. And the Medal of Valor Award went to Corporal Jonathan Weisenhut, Officer Gage Johnsey, Officer Jacob Teeter. The Chief's Award went to Administrative Assistant Rebecca York, and the Police Officer of the Year, uh, a name that you've heard multiple times tonight is Corporal Jonathan Weisenhut. Um, so I just wanted to give out, share those accommodations and the great things that happens with our police department, and, um, that's it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you doing it. Ms. Gier?
I don't have any announcements, other than it's hot out there.
I agree. Mr. Alman?
I have no announcements, but I hope everyone had a great Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilberton?
We had one item in, uh, committee that we, I think, were holding for a period of time, so I was not planning to set committee for next week. Yeah, because I didn't see anything else, but, um, yeah, I hope everybody had a, had a great Fourth. Um, we, uh, on a whim, left, left town before the Fourth, uh, spent the Fourth over in Georgia. Um, and in a stroke of luck, uh, we happened to be staying at the same hotel as one of my PT school classmates who lives in Louisiana, and, uh, I literally, we could have stayed there and probably not seen each other, but was walking in and saw him and his family, and I just thought, what the heck, it's a small world. Um, and so we ended up going and enjoying fireworks with them. Not to either of our credit, our, our wives both coordinated and wanted to go, um, to Stone Mountain, and so that's kind of how we ended up there, but neither one of them knew it and didn't coordinate it at all, so. Um, and then we got to see some friends that had, uh, left Homewood a couple years ago for a job opportunity in Atlanta, so, um, just, uh, I hope everybody had a good Fourth, um. Let's see, I'm, I'm trying to remember, Barry had a birthday? Yours was before our last meeting, so, happy birthday, Barry. Um, and I, I think that's it. I agree, it is hot outside. Oh, and I will, I will say, um, just real quick, the, um, Parks and Rec Department want to give them a shout-out for summer camp this summer. Um, David, who had been with the department for, oh gosh, ten, ten-plus years probably, and had always run summer camp, um, had moved to a different job, uh, in a different city, uh, about six months ago. And so, uh, Rusty Holly and, uh, Bo Walker are kind of heading that up this summer, and, um, I, I have not noticed a difference. Our kids have done it in the past, and I, I just commend them for kind of a seamless transition to, to new leadership for, for summer camp stuff, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sims?
Um, I'd just like to say that the beautification board met today for their July meeting, um, working on some great projects. So thankful to them, and also just as a reminder to anyone who, um, you know, is still interested in learning more about the city manager consideration, you know, please don't hesitate to reach out, um, and that's it. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Jones?
Uh, finance at five, uh, nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nelms?
I don't have anything tonight.
All right, Ms. Andrews?
Um, I don't have anything tonight. I just texted Kale. I have an item, um, I, I, I'm sorry. I'm reading and trying to talk at the same time. I'm not going to be here next Monday night, so I don't need to set P and D. But I do have an item in finance, and so I texted Kale to see if he could cover for me, and he said, yes, he'll blame me for all the things that go wrong, uh, and that he will cover for all the good parts of that. So anyway, um, so I'll miss you guys next week, but Will and I are going on an excellent adventure up the East Coast, so we'll see you at council in two weeks.
And that reminds me...
Oh, yeah, we got a deadline of July thirty-first. Yeah, thank you.
Does anyone on special issues remember if there's stuff on that agenda that we need to deal with next week?
There's not. It was, we, everything was signed, variances.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Great. All right, so then we only have two committees. All right, Mr. Harden?
I've got War and Peace here on the start, page one. Um, I just want to once again thank the city council and the members of the city council, because I, as, as a member of this council, I see how much work so many of y'all put into this job. And most of the people in the City of Homewood don't understand or realize how much work this actually is. Um, and so I appreciate it. I mean, Andy went to that event. He must have been writing really fast to get all those names down. But anyway, I mean, I tell people, there's nobody on the city council that isn't up here doing what they think is best for the city. And so I'm just, thank y'all for the work you're doing and how well we're doing the job, in my opinion, and, uh, anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't have anything tonight, so we'll go ahead and adjourn and see everybody in a couple weeks.